One.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the March 7, 2022 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And I will give you a few points about that in a moment. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone is recording the meeting, could you let us know? It's all right to record the meeting, but you do need to let us know. Give you a few seconds in case you're muted. So before I go through these points, if I could just mention as a general item, if you're not speaking, not recognized by the chair, not speaking, would you kindly mute your telephone, mute your telephone, or mute your microphone on your computer and kindly disable your video? That's with the exception of Planning Board members, you should leave your videos on, but kindly mute your microphone if you're not speaking. So as I mentioned, this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted in part, I'm sorry, is being conducted via remote participation only in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams, or by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 327-074-437-POUND. That's 327-074-437-POUND. And as I mentioned, you can also join the meeting using Microsoft Teams through the link that is posted in the agenda on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. With that, I will just mention that tonight's meeting, we actually have four public hearings, and there is a set procedure for that, and set points in our procedure when I can recognize public comments. And I will advise every one of that before we begin. So some of our procedural steps for the remote participation procedure are that we will start with a roll call of all board members. If you are a non-board member, a citizen, and you are recognized by the chair to ask a question or make a comment, we ask that you repeat your name. Please repeat your name. And if you're connected by phone, kindly give us the last four digits of your phone number. This is just for identification purposes. We always want to clearly identify all speakers. And as I mentioned, tonight is public hearings. After an agenda item has been discussed by the Planning Board, there are points in our procedure where I will request comments from the public, or questions from the public. For all votes that the Planning Board takes tonight, we will do those by roll call. And at the end of the meeting, we'll close the meeting with a verbal confirmation of adjournment and will note the time of adjournment. So let's begin with our roll call of board members. Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
And Tom Gagin, are you present?
Tom Gagin, present.
And Bob Wertschfter, are you present?
Yes, Bob Wertschfter is present and calling in on 6495.
Okay, six. I'll just make a note of that. I hope you can stay connected, Bob. And Roger Griffin, are you present?
Roger Griffin, present.
And Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, present.
All right. And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. So I think we can go then to our first agenda item. And what we, as I mentioned, what we have tonight is a series of four public hearings. At the request of the representatives or applicants for each proposed bylaw amendment, we've changed the order of the agenda. So we will be hearing Point 4 on your agenda, Item 4, to amend the Town of Chatham Protective Zoning Bylaw by adding a new section 7B20 Historic Preservation Incentives Dimensional Requirements, and to amend, excuse me, Appendix 2 Schedule of Dimensional requirements. So we'll be hearing that matter first before our clerk, Roger Griffin, reads the public notice for that public hearing. I'm just going to review the public hearing procedures for the board and for the public. So the first step is that the public notice will be read by Roger Griffin. Then there'll be a presentation by the applicant. In this case, Ally Sabatino, our principal planner, will be doing much of the presenting of the summary of the proposed bylaw amendments. For the first one, I understand that the Chair and Co-Chair of the Historical Commission, Frank Messina and Bob Lear, are also with us and will also be presenting. After the presentation by the applicant, we'll have questions from the Planning Board and comments. Then we take public statements in favor of the application. After that, the chairman reads any correspondence that has come in regarding any of, regarding the proposed bylaw amendment that is under, about which we're doing the public hearing. After that, we have public statements opposing the application, and then the opportunity for rebuttal by the applicant. Then we also have time after that for additional board comments. And at this point, the board would make a decision and do a formal vote about whether or not to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations. If the board does close the public hearing at that time, then there can be no further audience participation. The board is in deliberation. And then after that, would do a formal vote on whether to recommend or not recommend that particular proposed zoning bylaw amendment to annual town meeting. So that's our public hearing procedure. So let's begin, open our first public hearing, and this is regarding historical preservation incentives. And I'll ask Roger to kindly read the public notice.
Okay, Catherine, I wasn't here today, and I called Ally real quickly. Just wanted to get a clarification. When I'm reading the, and I usually look at the patents now. When I'm reading the public notice, am I actually reading the, was my question, the total amount of the complete amendment?
No, I don't think you have to do that, Ally. Correct me if I'm wrong. You can just read the legal notice that was provided in your packet. And in this case, go down to the last one, because we're doing the last one first.
No, no, when you had really read, when you had read that, I just thought maybe, you know, you confused me with it. Maybe I.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. That's, that's what I wanted. Okay, good. Okay. To amend the Town of Chatham Protective Zoning Bylaw by adding a new section 7B20 Historic Preservation Incentives Dimensional Requirements and to amend Appendix 2 Schedule of Dimensional Requirements. This warrant article would be, would apply to eligible historic buildings as defined in Section 158-2 of the General Chatham Bylaw in all zoning districts. The bylaw proposed through a special permit would allow for the waiver of building coverage requirements and the waiver of a butter setback requirement.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there more? I think you don't need to repeat the rest. Thank you. All right. So Ally, would you like to go ahead? Ally will begin with a PowerPoint presentation, and then we may have additional points from Frank Messina and Bob Lear.
Thank you, Catherine. Let me just share my screen very quickly. One second. Can you see that?
Yes, I can see it.
Great, thank you. So tonight with me is Frank Messina, Chair of the Historical Commission, and Bob Lear, Vice Chair of the Historical Commission. So at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions that any one of the board or the public might have. I just wanted to start off by saying that I will go through the PowerPoint presentation, which talks about the proposed bylaw. But the commission did do a lot of, you know, research and a lot of revisions to the proposed bylaw. We also reached out to the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Select Board, and we, you know, reviewed the bylaw with them to hear any comments, and we made changes based upon those comments. We also did hear a public input session where we welcomed members of the public to attend to give comments on the bylaw as well. So I just wanted to give the Planning Board a little bit, and the public at large, a little bit of background about the process and how we got here. So the draft Historic Preservation Incentive Bylaw. So what is the purpose of this bylaw? So the purpose is that the Historical Commission really noticed that there was a lot of historical structures and homes that were being tore down. And so we really wanted to create an incentive bylaw to give incentives for homeowners to be able to preserve the historic structure. And we did that through allowing or permitting flexibility to conventional requirements that could be an impediment to that historic preservation. So this bylaw does give the Zoning Board of Appeals the authority to issue the special permit by modifying certain dimensional standards. And I'll go through what those standards are a little bit later. So applicability, what does this apply to? And in the next slide, I will go through more specifically. But it is, it does apply to all eligible historic buildings in all zoning districts. So that's what the bylaw currently is proposing to effect right now. So as I just stated before, what's the definition of an eligible historic building? So any building or structure that's listed on the National Register of Historic Places could be eligible for these dimensional variations listed on the State Register of Historic Places, or has been designated by the Chatham Historical Commission to be historically significant building or structure. So this map just shows the different locations and where these proposed variations of dimensional requirements could happen. Basically, anywhere in the blue, which is a little bit scattered about, but in the blue is where these dimension, where these property owners could potentially take advantage of these dimensional requirements. These areas with homes on them are historic. So I just wanted to point that out. But really, you know, in the light blue, the latest, the latest blue color on there, there's about 121 historic buildings that could potentially take advantage of this. The darker blue, 300, there's about 222 that could potentially take advantage of it. So we do think that the, you know, this could apply to some houses in town and hopefully save them. So special permit priority. So the priority in granting special permits is obviously if the building and structure is kept on the lot rather than moved to different areas. But as the Historic Commission was really, you know, reviewing this and thinking about it, you know, they did realize that there is, you know, the need to potentially move a historic structure to a different lot. So we wanted to make sure that that was an allowable provision in the bylaw, to be able to move a historic structure to a different lot. That lot with that historic structure on it would be eligible for these dimensional variations. So we wanted to make sure it was known that obviously the first and foremost priority is to keep the historic structure on site. But we did, you know, realize that it could potentially help also if we allowed the bylaw to basically go with the structure to a different lot. But we wanted to close all the loopholes that we could with that. And so we also specifically put in wording in the bylaw that says that if the historic structure is moved from the original lot to a different lot, the lot that had the historic structure on it could not use these dimensional variations. So we just wanted to be very, very clear about that to make sure that it was upfront and people knew that we are allowing these dimensional variations. But if you take advantage and move a historic structure to another lot, you would not be able to use the dimensional variations on the lot where the historic structure was originally. So incentives for historic building preservation. So this is where we start to go into what kind of incentives we're proposing. So the following waivers of flexibility are available to eligible historic buildings. So the first one is building coverage. Right now, we're proposing to allow 1.5% of the greater total building coverage. And I have a chart of what that actually means. So right now, if you have a lot that's 20,000 square feet, your current building coverage, which is allowed by right now, is 2,800 square feet. If you were allowed to do this incentive, so if you were going to preserve your historic structure, we would allow you to have an additional building coverage that would go up to 3,500. So that's basically an additional 700 square feet you would be allowed to build on your building. If you are preserving the historic structure, then what would be allowed by right right now. And we do, we did talk about it, and it is proposed to be a sliding scale. So as your building, as your lot gets larger, you get additional building coverage. So as another example, if you have a 30,000 square foot lot, right now, the byright building cover, so it's what you're allowed right now, is 3,000 square feet. Through this incentive, it would be 3,750 square feet. So we're allowing 750 additional square feet. So you can kind of see the sliding scale that there. If it's 40,000, if you have a 40,000 square foot lot, right now, the building coverage is 4,000 square feet. And if you did the, you know, our multiplier, it would turn out to be 5,000 square feet that you could get. So that's an additional 1,000 square feet. So you can see our sliding scale as it goes up. The second incentive we are proposing is building setbacks. So again, this is all through the Zoning Board of Appeals by a special permit. The last, the last flexibility of dimensional standards was also by special permit for the Zoning Board of Appeals. But back to the building setbacks that is in front of us now. We are proposing to allow by special permit to waive the butter setback requirement in all zoning districts of up to one and a half, the minimum required setback in the zoning district, but in no case less than five feet. We thought that we really wanted to put in five feet to make it known that we didn't want anything less than that. But we are proposing up to one half the minimum required setback in the zoning district. So what would that look like? We did a diagram to kind of show what this could potentially look like. So this first line up here, this first diagram section, the blue building shows the building with no preservation. So it would be what a building would look like currently with the, you know, our current lot coverage, everything. As you can see, it's laid out here. There's just two, you know, ways of showing it with different buildings. But they, you know, say, say the same thing on a 40,000 square foot lot. The bottom level here, it shows what would have, what would be allowed to have if you had additional coverage allowed through this bylaw. And as you can see, so the white is the historic structure, and the pink is what would be the addition. And again, this example is for a 40,000 square foot lot. So you could see the addition on the back in this first example, and then the addition on the side as well. So special permit process. So prior to the initiation, initiation of the special permit procedure, so that's applying to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Historical Commission shall make a determinate, determination of eligibility for this incentive. So we wanted to make very clear that you have to go to the Historical Commission to receive the determination of eligibility before you are able to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So if the Historical Commission determines that the property is eligible, the applicant may then proceed with the special permit procedures. Written determination of this historical significance must accompany applications for a special permit. So we wanted to make it very clear that you have to go to the Historic Commission to get a determinate, determination of eligibility prior to going to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So findings required. In this slide, we've added three additional new findings that would be very, would be specific for this bylaw. The ones in bold, which are number four through 12, those already exist in our bylaw. That's what the Zoning Board of Appeals already looks at and makes findings when they look at applications. So we're just adding the first three specifically for this bylaw. So number one, the permitted modification of the bylaw standards and requirement is necessary to maintain the eligible historic building on the site on which it was originally constructed, or to relocate said building to another site deemed appropriate by the CBA on advice from the Historic Commission. Number two, the proposed renovation, repair, adaptive reuse, or removal preserves to the maximum extent feasible the historical and archaeological, architectural, I'm sorry, features of the building. And number three, failure to grant the special permit is likely to result in inappropriate use or physical modifications of the eligible historic building, including the potential demolition or loss of historically significant property. So those are the three that we've added, find those findings for the Zoning Board of Appeals. So conditions to be imposed. We really wanted to make it clear that the reason for this bylaw is to preserve the historic structures on the property. So we've, we've required through this bylaw, if you are going to get these dimensional variations, you have to put a store, a preservation restriction on your property. So that's the first section. That's a requirement upfront. It's something that has to be done. And then number two is termination of the special permits upon loss or destruction of a building. So we also wanted to make it clear that if there was loss of the historic building, whether it be from fire or neglect, anything like that, and the historic structure is no longer there, you will not be able to build back a new house with these dimensional variations. So basically, if you lose the historic structure by neglect, you will not be able to build back a new structure. You'll have to go back to what is allowed under our bylaw currently. And that is the end of my presentation. But as I said, Frank Messina and Bob Lear are here with me, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, great. Thank you, Ally. This is Catherine. That was marvelously clear and complete. Really appreciate your presentation. Before we go to questions, I'm just going to ask the Chair and Vice Chair of the Historic Commission if they'd like to add any comments before we go to questions from the board. Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, the, the only thing I would add is you can't top Ally.
Good.
You gave a great detailed presentation. We've been working on this for about good three years, as you know, Catherine. Some of our initial meetings together, when the concept was first presented to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board, a little bit busy, you know, we kind of decided that we would take the lead, at least, and begin the process from an historic preservation point of view, and go through some of the vetting processes which Ally referred to. And, you know, we've been before you, the Zoning Board, you know, Bob Duncanson, and the Select Board a couple of times. So we think we're there, of course, including the Town Council. So I know we couldn't incorporate all of the suggestions from the boards, because we tried to, you know, balance it against various elements in our own thinking with the Zoning Board and Ally professionally, and Katie Donovan, on what we thought would be a good start. You know, zoning tends to start, and then hopefully we'll build on it in time. I think as you folks tonight are modifying the ADU, know things happen in time. But we really would like to give it a good shot, and we believe the community will support it. Thank you very much. I don't know, Bob, if you have anything more to add? Bob Lear?
Yes, Bob Lear, would you like, do you have anything to add? Go ahead. Sorry.
Frank said what I would have said. It's not surprising, so that's great.
Okay, great. So let's just go through, see if there's questions or comments from the board. Start with our Vice Chair, Art Spru.
Thank you, Catherine. The, in, in Ally's comments, there were. Thank you, Catherine. In Ally's comments, there were, she referenced that town council had some comments. Most of the red lines were accepted, except for the three that she referred to there. I just want a clarification on the first one, on the wording architecturally significant. It was removed in most of the places, but it still was left in several locations within the bylaw. So I just want clarity associated with that, especially on the first sentence of the purpose. It does, it still is listed in there underneath the second line, that other elements of historic or architectural significance by allowing. So if there is no definition of what architectural significance is, as was referred to there, then should we actually be cautious and not use that in, in the terminology that you have in the bylaw? I'm just asking for clarification associated with this.
I will try to start, but then I will hand it off to Frank and Bob. They'll know much better than I will. So that first line in that, on the purpose section was what was originally in our bylaw. Town council added architecturally significant in those other locations that the commission voted to not accept. I do believe that, you know, historic, historical and architectural significance are things that the historic commission looks at, but historical significance is the broader term for it. And so even though it is mentioned in there, you know, it is something that they do look at, but historical significance is more of a broader term, which is why those other sections were removed to focus specifically on historical significance. But Bob or Frank, if you wanted to chime in?
I'll try. Frank can obviously add to it. The issue is that the term architectural significance is included in the definition of what makes something historical significant. So it is not an independent entity. You can't just say that a building was put up 50 years ago is architecturally significant and therefore qualifies, because it doesn't get to the historical commission. So it's, it's a little, you make a great point. It's kind of a fine line, but a building that has to be 75 years old, and then it has to, for some other reason, be historically significant, and it can be because of its architecture. Does that help?
Yes.
That actually explains it very well. I'm, I'm good with that. Now, I understand that it's located in two places, and it makes sense. It's underneath 3C2. So I, and I, it makes sense of what you're saying, that it's sort of tied in with the historical significant piece. That's the only questions I have, Catherine.
Thank you. Yes, that makes a lot of sense. And I'm just going to ask Frank and Bob if you are, if the historic commission is satisfied with the wording of the bylaw as we have it now, in terms of these two terms, historic significance and architectural significance, or do you need to make any minor changes in the final version that we have? Or are you satisfied with it?
Bob, I believe we voted at last meeting. I wasn't there, but.
Yes, yes, we had an extensive discussion about this very issue as to why, at least I felt that it really didn't belong as an independent entity, and to try to fold that into the, the overall historic significance designation, definition, sorry.
All right. So in other words, we can leave it as it stands, in your opinion?
Yes.
Great. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. How about Bob Wortschafter?
Catherine, I have no questions.
All right. And how about Tom Gagin? Any questions or comments on this proposed bylaw amendment?
Tom Gagin, my only comment is to thank the board, the historical board, for all the hard work. As a planning board, we get into these areas too. It takes forever. But we do understand, I speak for myself, probably the board, to thank you for putting up with all you did for the last three years. So thank you very much.
Our pleasure.
And Warren Chain, any comments or questions for Ally or Frank or Bob?
You know, this is Warren Chain. I echo the thoughts already given and thanks and appreciation for all the work that's been done. I have just, for clarification, what we have added here is the first, is three additional criteria for the CBA to consider when, in addition to items four through 12, I think it was, Ally, that they currently look at when looking at a proposal. I'm curious as to whether the criteria that we've added make it more or less different, or, or really have no effect on the guidance or the likely approval by the CBA for a petitioner. I mean, seven out of 10 lots are non-conforming in town. Many of the historic buildings, I assume, are on non-conforming lots. So items four through 12 that are listed here already apply, but it does seem to me that dimensional requirements are frequently stretched by applicants who are looking for a special permit to destroy and demolish, I should say, and rebuild a mega mansion on a non-conforming lot. And I'm wondering if the dimensional requirements that are currently considered are somehow restricted more by the addition of the historic, the historic designation, and the addition of items 1, 2, 3 for criteria for the CBA to consider.
Frank or Bob? Yeah, go ahead.
Bob, you want to take the first shot at that?
Well, I must admit, I'm not all that familiar with, necessarily agree with the zoning board's determinations on non-conforming lots, but I'd like, maybe Ally has a broader experience with it.
Well, let me.
I think it's a good question.
Yeah, let me, let me add something on the process. You know, when the zoning is involved with anything, any kind of special permit or variance, you know, the concept of historic preservation really is not, no, is not a subject of, it's, you know, it's very, we, we, as we often say in the historical commission, you know, we understand we're very subjective, the whole issue of historic preservation. So what we're attempting to do here is to introduce the concept of historic preservation into the zoning process. And, and these are small, relatively small variances, we believe. And, and I don't think it's going to complicate, you know, their, their, which is what your question was, will it complicate the process? I don't believe so. At least that was not the, the indications when we met, sat with the zoning board in their questions, nor in a number of conversations with David, David Nixon. Ally, can you expand on that?
Yeah, no, thanks. So just to take it back, I think, Warren, to your question, well, if it is a pre-existing non-conforming, there are obviously some protections that are in our, you know, bylaw currently for people, property owners, to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a special permit. And so those don't necessarily, if you had, you know, if you could go that avenue, you, you know, potentially could take it as a property owner to vary the dimensional requirements. This would be for, you know, conforming setbacks or lots that could take advantage of this. In, I'm just saying, in reality, is what I believe that will probably occur, is if you have a conforming setback or a conforming lot coverage or a conforming lot, you would, you know, be able to take advantage of this bylaw and go through this process to the zoning board of appeals. If you have a pre-existing lot, you know, you're probably going to go through the other process, special permit process, to go to the zoning board of appeals. We just want, you know, to give another option out there. I don't think that, you know, these first three findings are, you know, would be a huge hurdle for someone to overcome who already wants, you know, is preserving their historic structure in order to gain these dimensional variations. So, you know, but that's my personal, my personal opinion. I'm not on the board, but I, I agree with Frank that they didn't, you know, when we went to the zoning board of appeals to present this, it didn't feel like it was, you know, a major hurdle for them.
Well, I, I thank both of you. I mean, your comments collectively, you know, clarify for me exactly, exactly what's going on here. You know, and again, I'm very much in favor of this, and I appreciate the work done by the historic commission. No other comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Catherine, I'll just comment. Ally, I, and Frank, and Bob, I remember when, when we first started working on this, when you first started working on this, that same question came up. And Ally, I remember we discussed it on a number of occasions, that, that the pre-existing non-conforming lots already had an avenue to obtain, you know, dimension, variances, or some variance in the dimensional requirements, just by going through the special permit process. So it makes sense what you're saying, that this allows those conforming lots with conforming structures that have historic structures to also get some relief. So that's great. Thank you so much. And I guess, Roger, questions or comments, please?
No, I have, I think I, you know, pretty much like everyone else, we've answered a lot of those questions. But I just want to thank Bob and Frank for their, you know, all their hard work, because these are the things that, you know, would, you know, make our historical buildings, what makes Chatham what it is. And thank you for the hard work. And it's a continual tweaking situation. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And this, this is Catherine. Again, I think I just want to echo what my colleagues on the planning board have said. You've done a lot of hard work. I know it's been a long process with Ally and with community development department, Frank, and Bob. You've done a great, careful crafting of this bylaw. I think it's been really, it's obvious that it's really been carefully thought through and carefully worded. I think it's a really important effort to help preserve some of our historic structures in town, more of them in town. And I also want to thank you for your long and hard work, and, and very intelligently done, in my humble opinion. So if I'm getting a sense from the board, we do need to go through our public hearing process. So we are now at the point where I would ask for public statements in favor of the application. If there's anyone in the public connected who would like to make a comment or in favor of the application, please raise your hand. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. I don't see anyone. And so then the next item is that I would read correspondence, but we have not received any correspondence to be read at this public hearing. So I will also ask then for public statements in opposition to this application. And again, I'll give people a few seconds in case you're muted, and I don't see any raised hands. And because there was nothing in opposition, we don't really need a rebuttal. I'll just ask the board, before we vote to close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations and formal voting, are there any additional comments from the board that you'd like to make? So in that case, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing, which means there'll be no further comments from the public. And the board enters formal deliberation and formal vote. Do I have a motion to that effect?
This is Warren Chain. I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wortschafter?
Bob Wortschafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So this public hearing is now closed. The board is in deliberation, hearing the sense of the board. I think we can go, unless there's more discussion, I think we could go directly to vote. And I would propose that we vote, that I ask for a motion to recommend this proposed bylaw amendment for historic preservation incentives to annual town meeting. Barring any further discussion by the board, may I have a motion to that effect?
This is Warren Chain. I so move.
May I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that motion.
So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wortschafter?
Bob Wortschafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we recommend this proposed bylaw amendment for historic preservation incentives, that we give a positive recommendation to annual town meeting. So thank you. Thank you, Ally, for your presentation. Thank you, Frank and Bob, for your, for all your work and for your answers to questions. And thank you for being with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So let's go to the next matter on our agenda. Excuse me, one moment. So the next item on our agenda is actually what was item number one, but we will now open a new public hearing. And then, and this is a public hearing with regard to a proposed bylaw amendment to amend the Town of Chatham Protective Zoning Bylaw, Section 7B19, accessory dwelling unit. And I will ask, I won't read our procedures again, but I'll ask Roger to begin by reading the public notice for this proposed bylaw amendment.
Okay. The Warren article would revise the existing ADU bylaws to eliminate the requirement for both the principal dwelling and the ADU to be occupied on a year-round basis by allowing either the ADU or the principal, principal dwelling to be leased for a minimum of 12 months, 12 consecutive months, with no subletting to occur. The second proposed revision would allow the interior ADUs to be permitted by right.
Thank you. And again, we'll start with the presentation. Maybe Ally can give a short summary for the benefit of the public and the planning board, although the planning board is pretty familiar with this matter. But I'll ask Ally just to give a short summary for everybody.
Sure, of course. So the planning board is proposing two changes tonight. It was just right in the legal notice, but I'll reiterate. The first one is to revise the bylaw to eliminate the need for both the principal dwelling and the ADU to be occupied on a year-round basis. We feel that this could potentially allow more use of the bylaw through allowing this. However, it would be additional, the AD would still need to be rented on a year-round basis. That wouldn't change. And in addition to this, I just want to point out that the cap of 10 by right permits and 10 special permits within a 12-month period would still be in effect. So we would not be able to issue more than that in a single year. So we are not proposing a change to that section. And then the second proposed change that the board is making is to allow all interior ADUs to be by right, regardless if the parcel is on a pre-existing non-conforming lot or not. If you're, if an AD is proposed in, for, inside the structure, it would be allowed to be by right. So that would be a building permit. But again, you know, every portion of the bylaw would still apply in that effect. They would still need to meet all health department requirements, building code, things like that. And again, the cap would still be on the year. So the 10 cap would still be on the year. So I just wanted to point those out.
I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Ally. So we'll just go directly. Are there any comments from the board? We can just go through and see if anyone would like to make a comment? Or if there's any questions? Yes, please go ahead, Tom.
Amen.
Thank you. How about Art? Any comments?
Just, just a clarification. The town council made some changes in blue. I think those are reasonable to clarify the point there. I think he also said it's part of an explanation that we should clarify that we concur. I think he also said as part of an explanation that we should clarify that we concur with his assessment that it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. And I don't know where that getting incorporated, but I think we should just note that that is something that we do agree with, with him on. Other than that, I'm, I'm very supportive of this bylaw revision. Anything that we can do to encourage more ADUs, I'm, I'm in favor of. Thank you.
Great. Bob Wurchafter, any comments?
No, I have no comments or questions.
And Warren?
This is Warren Chain. You know, Ally, I think given that this is being done to try and actually get the ADUs applied for, I just happen to know for the record how many have yet been applied for and/or built. Just to sort of complete the background as to why this is really an important amendment.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah. For that prompt. Yeah, so three applications have been approved through special permit from the zoning board of appeals. And then your last packet, I was just looking to see if I included it in this one, but I didn't, had a diagram on a chart of specifics for those applications. So we feel that, you know, these amendments could potentially encourage more use of the bylaw.
Thank you for having me.
Great. And Roger, did I ask for any comments from you yet?
No, no, you didn't. But the only comment I do have is it's nice to see that we pass something. Our timing is great on this because obviously there's, there's a major need out there for housing. And hopefully this can help it to be, we're doing the right thing. Other than that, I'm good.
Great. Mrs. Catherine, I agree. I think this will, these two measures that we're proposing will open up the use of the bylaw to more people. And we hope, we would hope and anticipate that that will lead to the creation of more ADUs. And, and as Rogers noted, the need for more housing options and attainable housing options in Chatham is really great. And so this can be one step to help address that issue. And, and as everyone remembers, and just I'll remind the public that when the ADU bylaw was put in place a couple of years ago, the board did make a commitment to review it after a couple of years and to see how it was performing and then to recommend any proposed changes. And that's basically what we're doing now. We're recommending these changes. So with that being said, I'll see if there's anyone from the public who's connected who would like to make a statement in favor of this proposed bylaw amendment. And I see a hand raised. It says E. I'm going to think, is that Elaine? Elaine Gibbs? Go ahead. EBG, you must be muted?
Sorry, yes, that must be me.
Okay.
I just have some clarification questions. Because, you know, I had been involved early on in this. Because there's, I just want to understand, because there's no deed restriction when a non-conforming ADU is built. And there is really no requirement that they have to rent it out because there are all kinds of caveats. There can be, you know, they can't get tenants or whatever. And then they sell the house, then it's no longer an ADU because it hasn't been deed restricted. There is no way that you could force a, a new owner to do that. So now they have a non-conforming ADU. Is that, or a non-conforming building on their property that they can use as a guest house? Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Is there any protections against that? I don't think there are because it's not deed restricted.
I'm going to ask Ally to comment on that. Yeah.
Sure. I believe we discussed this in length when the original proposal came forward for the ADU. And the planning board agreed that the monitoring and enforcement section, that was really beefed up through all the public comment and input at that time, was sufficient to be able to monitor the proposed ADUs that come in. We did obviously supply the planning board with our interim spreadsheet that we keep track of for each application that comes in. So we are currently monitoring each application that was approved through the zoning board of appeals. And if it was by right, we would monitor it the same way. I think that might answer the question, but if the planning board wants to also answer, I think that, you know, obviously these jump in.
I, I'm not talking about when the current owner who built the ADU. I'm talking about when the house is sold to a new owner. There is no enforcement ability to make them keep it an ADU because it's not deed restricted. Is that correct? It could, it just becomes a non-conforming ancillary building on the property that can be used for any reason.
So just like any permit that is applied for, if you get a, you know, addition to your house or anything like that, all those permits are on record at the town and they follow with the building. So if someone, if the owner applies for an applicant, a special permit, and they get a building permit from that special permit, that's on record with us. And that's something that the, is on record with the property basically, even though it is not a deed restriction, as you say. But we do have, you know, monitoring of that to that.
So you say that somebody could buy a house that has no deed restriction, saying it's an accessory dwelling, that it, and that you would make them go in and remove a kitchen after they bought the property. I, I, we've already been down this road. I think that, I don't think you would be do that. I think what's going to happen is people are going to end up with a, a non-conforming guest houses. The second question was about, if I understand correctly, when you said you do not have to live there year-round, what you're saying is that non-residents can now do it. In other words, summer residents or people who only own the main house as an investment property. So the scenario that I potentially see is that there are a lot of investment properties here where, you know, the owners may live, come in for two weeks, but they rent it out for the rest of the year, the primary residence. And then the ADU will be rented out. So there is nobody monitoring whether or not. I mean, I know you say you have monitoring, but I guess I don't know what it is because they may say they're renting it out to someone, but you say they can't sublet it. But if they don't, are never really required to rent it out, which is true because they could say, well, I'm, it's for my mother-in-law. And then it's, it's actually being rented out as an Airbnb. You don't check on that. So, and the property owner is not checking on it. And so the only way I can see it's monitored is if the neighbors are saying, we now have 20 people living next door and they're coming and going every two to four weeks. So I just want to, I, I just want to be clear that that is what can happen because there are a lot of investment properties around here where the owners are never on site. And if there's two properties being rented out, who, who's monitoring that? You know, to make sure that you're achieving your objectives and it's not a nuisance to, you know, the people, you know, the butters. They shouldn't have to call and say, I've seen 20 different people in that year-round rental and they keep changing every six weeks. So is there a way, do you go in and check or not?
No.
I think Ally has her hand raised. Do you have, do you want to go ahead, Ally?
Sure. So, and we do require a submission of a lease every year that says that it's leased out year, on a year-round basis. So that is our monitoring.
But it doesn't actually have to be rented out because you also have those caveats that, you know, there could be an illness where people can't just find tenants. So let's say it's built as an ADU, but you never get the lease because they don't have a tenant. And then it is being used and you never even know it because you don't think it's leased out. I'm just saying, I, I think that you've got to beef up the monitoring on this because I could see that happening because there's no requirement to rent out an ADU, basically. You're not required to do it. So if it's being used and it's being rented out, how are you going to know that if there's no lease? I'm just concerned there's going to be a lot of non-conforming guest houses being built. That's, but, you know, we've been down that road before. But I'm, I'm not sure this is going to help the situation because when this was sold to the public, it was for affordable housing with a small A. And, you know, I'm not seeing it happen, but, because I don't think there's enough monitoring. And I think it's, it could potentially cause problems for increasing the problem we're trying to prevent, which is a lot more guest houses and a lot more investment properties. But those are my comments.
Thanks Elaine. I do see that Art has his hand raised. Do you want to go ahead, Art?
Yes, I think underneath the enforcement section 6A, it deals with this whole issue associated with someone who has an ADU, but they're not leasing it. They, they do have to provide satisfactory evidence to the building commissioner on it. So that, that is an element of what we used at the original one and it hasn't changed with this. Is if there's an ADU and there isn't any enforcement of it, and any evidence that they have it, then, then they're not complying with the, with the bylaw. That, I think that that's how we dealt with it before. There's no difference than the original. And whether, whether this is with the principal residents there or not, someone in principal residence or not, the same issue applies. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Yes, the, the same monitoring and enforcement measures are in place. We're not amending those. The two amendments, just as Ally summarized, are just that the internal ADUs can be built by right if it's internal to the main structure. And the second one is that it's not necessary that both units are occupied year-round, but that the ADU unit must be rented year-round as a 12-year, as a 12-month lease. But all the same monitoring and enforcement measures that were in the original ADU bylaw are still in place. So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, let's go ahead to, I see another hand raised.
If I could make one more comment, I think the issue was, at the time, there was no monitoring. By loosening it up and saying that there no longer has to be an owner on site, I think the monitoring should have been tightened up. I mean, it was one thing if the owners were going to be there, but now they could never be there. And I think that's a problem with the bylaw. And I think that should have been tightened up. So there is monitoring. Thank you.
Thanks Elaine. And I see another hand raised. I just see the initial R. I don't see your whole name. Could you? I'm sorry?
It's Bob Wurchafter. At least I have my hand up.
Oh, you do? I don't see your hand up, but go ahead, Bob.
Okay, well, so I, I guess I have two issues with what Ms. Gibbs said. Number one is I think we should be depending on neighbors to alert the, the town to issues of overcrowding or abuse of, of both the, you know, rules of the accessory dwelling unit and, and over occupancy in general. I don't know how else we will enforce anything in this town if neighbors are not the ones that alert us to issues. And I, I'm not quite sure how removing the land, the requirement that the owner be there lessens our enforcement when it's the owner who is either abusing or not abusing the, the issue in the first place. So, so whether they're there or not, if they're, if they're misusing the ADU, we have the same, same problem. This does, this, this does not lessen our enforcement because we've now made it into a, the landlord, the owner doesn't have to be there. That doesn't make any sense to me as to why that, we would have to make this more stringent now that the owner's not going to be there.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Tom, I saw your hand up and I see Roger's hand up. Who'd like to go first? Tom, why don't you go first?
Well, I'd always go with the older man. So Roger, if you want to speak for us, as long as you yield.
Listen, let me use, how many fingers will I use for that? But anyway, I'm, I guess you know what, that comedy like me, I think, you know, I don't think we really have to worry about the monitoring at this point because I think we're, we're taking this slow. We're talking, you know, maybe, you know, 10 of each, each year. And I think, I really feel that we, there could be something, like anything, there could be some wrinkles. It could be some tweaking, but I think we're taking it slow enough to be, prevent, prevent those things. And I very much agree with Bob Wurchafter saying sometimes your best critics are going to be your neighbors. So I, I think, I think we're on the right track. And I think we'll be able to monitor some of those things as we, as we see fit. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Roger. So Tom, did you want to go ahead?
Yes, I'd like to talk to Elaine Gibbs's point, her first point about putting a deed restriction. I know that that was a strong issue the first time around. But what I'd like to have her think about, because I've been involved with property transfers, is that any shop attorney where someone has sold a property, and that's what Elaine is confused, not confused, excuse me, that's what she's concerned with, is that building permits are a matter of public record. So if someone goes to sell the building and on public record, there are these building permits, I believe the attorney's going to ask what the heck's going on. I know that in transferring properties, people sometimes don't pull permits. And you go into a building and all of a sudden there's an extra kitchen there or a bathroom or a wall goes up. Well, a lot of flags go up under that circumstance. Take the wall down so I can see if the electricity was done correctly. Where's your electrical permit? Where's your plumbing permit? My point to Elaine is I hope we could alleviate her fears because there's a public record that follows these homes.
Okay, great. So again, I just want to be sure we're following our public hearing procedures. We're still in board questions and comments. Has everyone on the board made whatever comments they want to make? Or questions? And then we were, we also need to then take public statements in favor of the application. So I will more formally request any public statements in favor of the application. And I'll give people a few moments in case you're muted. And I believe we do not have any correspondence that's come in, so I have no correspondence to read. And then we have heard from Elaine who has some concerns, but I'll ask if there are any other public comments in opposition to the application. And I think the next point is rebuttal. I think some board members have responded to Elaine's concern. Anyone else wish to make a comment in response to these concerns?
Tom Gagin, I would.
All right, please go ahead, Tom.
I think this board has done a lot of due diligence to try to meet, not perfection because we can't, to meet what is the norm for people who are putting in ADUs. Could there be something done that was not to the letter of the law, I suppose? But I got to look at the long term. What is the town gaining versus what is the possibility or probability of a loss? I think this is an avenue, the ADU is an avenue, to add apartments that are very, very muchly, very much needed in our community. So to think of these things as going vacant after you built one, again, doesn't logically make sense to me. So will someone be a scofflaw? There's no perfect system. But I really enforce and, and encourage that we've got three AD units, ADU units now and we didn't have them before.
Great, thank you, Tom. Any other comments from the board? And then any other general board comments about this? Because the next step would be that we would close the public hearing and enter formal deliberations and formal vote.
Art Spru, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Art. Can I have a second?
Tom Gagin, seconds.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
You know.
Bob Wurchafter?
Approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve this public hearing is now closed. And we have no further participation from the public. And is there any discussion or deliberation from the board? If there's none, I would request a motion that we recommend this proposed bylaw amendment to annual town meeting. Warren, I see your hand raised. Did you have a discussion point?
I was only going to make a comment that really follows on Elaine Gibbs's commentary. And that is that I do believe the enforcement section of this pretty well covers the ground that has been thought through on the matter of how we keep these from becoming short-term rental units instead of what they're intended to be. But it is the case that since we really don't have any ADUs at the moment, that the workload on the building commissioner is certainly de minimis with respect to enforcement. To the extent that we begin to have some ADUs, that over time will in fact require some additional work to monitor and check on the leases and follow up monthly to make sure that attempts are being made in accordance with the enforcement section. So I don't know that we have the ability to think forward to what kinds of resources might need to be used that may not even exist right now with respect to putting teeth in the enforcement sections. But I do think the enforcement sections we thought through and basically provide the comfort that is appropriate at the moment. But again, I just wanted to say we really, the enforcement is really a non-issue now because there really aren't any. So if we ended up having 20 or 30 of these that had to have somebody check on the leases every month, then that becomes perhaps a significant resource issue with respect to, you know, enforcing the enforcement section. But that's not today's problem. And I don't think that we have the ability to look forward in our crystal balls and amend this in any way other than where it's drafted. So, but I'm certainly in favor of it. But that's all my comment.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just make a quick comment. This is Catherine, that, you know, as I recall, we did at length discuss and review the enforcement, the monitoring and enforcement aspect of this bylaw. And I think the first pass, it was, you know, we all agreed that it was adequate, and the town agreed that it was adequate. When a permit is issued for an ADU, the permit goes along with the land. It goes along with the property. So it does pass on to the new owner. And the building commissioner is the one who monitors and enforces the ADUs. So just a reminder, I think we did consider this very carefully, but it's a good reminder. So is there any other discussion before we go to vote on this? Could I have a motion?
Art Sprou, I'd like to make a motion to recommend a revision to the accessory dwelling unit zoning amendment to the annual town meeting.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Roger Griffin, I'll second that motion.
Let's do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we send our recommendation for this revision of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to annual town meeting. We send it with the planning board's positive recommendation. At this point, I do just want to confer with Ally regarding the point that Arthur brought up about town council's determination that this particular revision will require a two-thirds vote and does not qualify for the reduced vote, but that some other measures that the planning board might take in the future would qualify for the 50% vote. But do you think that the planning board should do a formal vote? That we concur with town council's determination on this matter?
Yeah, if you would like to do that, I think that that would be perfectly acceptable. We could also include it in your letter to town meeting.
All right.
Specifically include that the super majority vote is required. But just so the board knows, and I'm sure you do, in the town meeting warrant, it specifically says what the vote threshold will be. And so it will be included in there as well.
Okay, great. Well, let's do a formal vote then, as long as that's acceptable. It just makes it very clear. Art, did you have a comment before we vote?
Well, I do, because I thought in town council's statement, it is actually, the moderator is the one who actually does affirm that this is the case. And if that's the case, I'm not sure, other than what is stated in the warrant article that it's a two-thirds vote, whether ours makes any difference in the world at all on it. Just my thought, I just, just reading what the town council said.
I would find it, can you?
Sorry, the very last part of this letter.
Pardon me?
The very end of his letter. Town council.
Affirm the voting threshold. The town moderator has authority to preside and regulate the proceedings and decide all questions of order, including the required quantum of vote on such zoning amendment articles. But I think in addition to that, two sentences before it says, "It is recommended that the planning board include in this report a determination of which voting threshold applies to the zoning proposal." So I think our vote on it is also significant, knowing that it's, that the town moderator will also decide all questions of order.
Okay, then I'll just make a motion that our determination is the voting threshold of two-thirds applies to this zoning article.
Okay, great. That the planning board agrees with that determination.
Agrees with that, yes.
Okay, great. And then the moderator will also weigh in. Is, Ally, your hand is raised. Do you want to comment?
No, I agree with that. I just also wanted to ask the planning board, though, our town council also did include just some minor revisions to the bylaw in blue.
Oh, yes.
And I think that the planning board should vote to accept those if you think that that is something that you'd like to do.
Okay.
I'll have my hand raised. Tom Gagin.
Okay, I didn't see your hand. Sorry, Tom. We do have a motion on the floor, just a reminder. But go ahead, Tom.
I'd like to amend that motion. I think that this board should be very proactive. That requires 50%. I don't know why we're concurring with town council. I think what Arthur is saying, and I believe that the moderator would have the right to do this. Why are we setting ourselves up with a two-thirds vote when we could recommend a majority vote? I don't understand the logic of that.
Ally has her hand raised. Please go ahead.
Sure. So under the new housing bill that was just passed by the Senate, or the legislature, I'm sorry, it did allow for a lower threshold for some very specific housing-related articles at town meeting for the vote. And so I had thought that potentially this revision to the ADU bylaw could in fact meet that requirement. But after town council reviewed the proposal, he also reviewed it with the Attorney General's office, which I think he mentions in his wording. And they concluded that, you know, based upon what our proposal, and they also did review the proposed draft bylaw, that it wouldn't meet that threshold for the lower majority. So not only does, you know, obviously, the moderator have to make the determination, but if it does get passed at town meeting, and it only gets passed with a majority, and then it goes to the Attorney General's office for approval, and the Attorney General's office doesn't confer that this bylaw would be eligible for the two-thirds, you know, for the majority vote at town meeting, the Attorney General's office can, you know, disapprove the bylaw. So we wanted to be very, make sure and be very clear that this, you know, what vote threshold it would be.
This is Catherine. I just want to comment in this matter, Tom. It's not our recommendation or, we're not free to recommend or not to recommend. This is a determination about what the law allows. And so it's an interpretation of the law as it's in place. And as Ally explained, there are certain clearly defined matters that would qualify for the simple majority vote. Town council and Attorney General's office have both determined that this matter does not qualify for the simple majority. And the vote that we're going to hear is not that we recommend the two-thirds majority, but simply that we agree with what town council and the Attorney General have determined that this particular bylaw amendment does not qualify for that reduced quantum vote, 50% vote. So it's not something arbitrary. We're just saying that we agree with it. You can vote that you disagree with their determination if you, you know, we don't always have to vote unanimously.
I have my hand up, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't see it raised, but please go ahead.
I was unaware that the Attorney General's office had also agreed with town council. I've been in situations before where one does not want to fight with or argue with the Attorney General's office. You will lose. So I change my concern in wanting to push this to a 50% vote because we'll lose with the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what, thank you, Tom. That's what Ally was explaining. So we do have, let's do this, we do have a motion on the floor still, which is a vote just saying that we agree with the determination of town council and the Attorney General that this particular proposed bylaw amendment does not qualify for the 50% simple majority, but would require the two-thirds vote. So we have a motion on the floor. Did I get a second to that motion? I need a second.
Roger Griffin, I'll second that motion.
All right, so let's do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Approve, Tom Gagin.
Thank you. Bob Wurchafter.
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. And Ally has reminded us that perhaps we need to take a third vote specifically on the revisions that town council suggests, which are in blue. Let me see if I can find them. And just specifically vote that we either accept or do not accept those revisions. Let's take a look at those.
Under 4H.
All right, so 4H. So it's about three lines into that. And what town council suggests we say is, and Ally, correct me if I'm not, it's a little difficult to see with the red and the blue and the black, but I'll try my best. Neither of said units shall be used for boarding or rooming house purposes for any other boarding and lodging use, nor for other commercial use. No occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months and other conditions as stated herein. Is that, that's the correct wording that town council is suggesting for that sentence?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So assured me that he hasn't changed the intent at all in the bylaw with the change of wording. It's just kind of legally is that he thought this would be better legal wording than what we.
Okay. It does seem to have the same meaning. Any other comments from the board before we would go to a formal vote? And I would suggest that it really doesn't change the meaning. It may just be more clear legally. Any other comments or questions from the board on that change of wording? So if we feel we can accept that change of wording, could I have a motion that we vote to accept town council's suggested change of wording in blue, noted in blue, under 4H?
Well, Madam Chairman, this is Warren Chain. I move that we accept the proposed changes from town council in the draft bylaw.
Thank you. And can I have a second to that motion?
Art Sprou, I can second that.
All right, great. Let's do a roll call vote.
Hold on. I read this. Yeah, I'm sorry, but I read this to say, "No occupancy of any rental unit is permitted." But there's two units, one of which we have allowed to be a rental unit. And it doesn't need to be leased. It has to be no occupancy of the said rental unit.
Okay, so no occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease. And you prefer the said rental unit?
Yeah, because it's, the other one is allowed to be leased and rented out. So it's just too confusing to me.
So clarify what you're saying, Bob. I'm afraid when you say the other one, do you mean the principal dwelling? It says, "No occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months." So it is saying that it has to be leased?
Yeah, but then you can't, it says, "Both units are prohibited from any use as rental units." And that's not correct.
No.
It doesn't say, I'm not reading that it says that.
I'm reading the blue marked up. It now says, "Both units are prohibited from any use as rental units on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis." That's, I'm sorry, that's not what we've been talking about this whole time.
Yeah, I think Bob is right about this one, Catherine.
Okay, that's another section. That's two sentences up. I was just looking at the changes in blue. So now we're looking.
It's the last sentence in that one.
Okay, read the sentence. Because "Both units are prohibited from any use as rental units on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental services and websites." Is that what you're objecting to?
No, no, it's the last sentence, which says, "No occupancy of any rental unit is permitted." That's the one that Bob's bringing up, and he's got point there.
Yes, because the principal dwelling could be occupied by the owners and not rented on a 12-year lease. That's what you're saying, Bob.
And there, as far, I'm not sure, are we saying, so did we say you don't have to live there all the time, but you can't rent it out to send anybody else? Or did we say you can still, you can live there part-time, rent it out, and still have an ADU? I mean, I think we have a ambiguity here.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yes, because, yes, I see what you're saying. So, because I think for, let's take a look at the principal dwelling. I think it was our idea that the owner may be present or may not be present. They may be there part-time. They may be a summer resident. Did we want to prohibit the owner from renting the principal dwelling out? As, I think we did want to prohibit them from renting the principal dwelling as a weekly rental. Is that what you're saying, Bob?
Yeah, well, then all of Ms. Gibbs' concerns about having, you know, a lot of people there would not be there. But I'm not sure how many more. I mean, I'm fine with it, but that isn't what we were describing before. I think this actually. I think this, this actually is, is better in that it only allows, the only thing that we've changed is the person who owns that house doesn't have to be in the house all the time. They just, they just have to be the only person that's in the house when somebody's in that house.
That's what, Mrs. Catherine, that's what I understood our intention was. That it, that in a sense we are opening it up to property owners who are not full-time year-round residents of Chatham, but that the ADU, the rented unit, had to be a 12-month year-round consecutive lease. That's what I understood the board's intention was.
All right, that's much clearer, and it, it eliminates all of Elaine's concerns that, that you wouldn't be able to distinguish the ADU from the other unit that was being rented out all the time and had tons of people, and you couldn't tell the difference. So I, I like this better.
Okay. Okay, and Bob, do you feel comfortable that the wording, all of the wording in, the changes in red and black, and then the final suggested changes from Town Council in blue, accurately convey what the board's intention is? And I do, I do see a couple of hands raised. Okay, all right, so you're good about it now. And Art has his hand raised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going back to what Bob originally said, because I'm reading this different now.
Okay.
There, and, and I, I'm just going to read it the way I'm understanding it, and then I want to go back to the original text. It says, no occupancy of any rental unit is permitted. So unless it's a 12-year lease. Now, that means anything on the property, period. Okay? That's what it's saying.
Of any rental unit, though. So the owned unit is, it's not a rental unit, it's owned by the property owner.
Yeah, but it's, now you're getting into a gray area here. If you go back to the wording that we had previously, it's referring to only the accessory dwelling unit.
That's true.
And, and that goes back to what we originally were saying. We are not dealing with the ownership and the use of the primary residence. We never did before. This could be interpreted perhaps by the building commissioner or the zoning board of appeals in a very different way. I don't think we should create more complications and confusions and, and more resistance to people adding accessory dwelling units. We wanted to just deal with the accessory dwelling unit. So I think we should go back to the original language that we had, that Bob was referring to. No occupancy of the rental unit, ADU, is permitted other than by 12 consecutive months. That's always the point that we were making, nothing else. So I think we should strike the words that, on that last sentence in blue.
Okay, this is Catherine. I just want to comment, though, and I think it did come up in our discussions, that I believe we wanted to allow for the possibility that the owner of the property would decide to rent the main house, so to speak, as an ADU, under those terms and under those restrictions. And if, say, for example, they were a summer resident, they would come and they would stay in the smaller ADU apartment. So we wanted, as I remember, we wanted to allow for the flipping of the purposes, and I believe that's why Town Council suggested that we said, that we would say no occupancy of any rental unit. Because that would mean if the main house, so to speak, became the rental unit, that it would be the one, the item that needed to be rented year-round for at least of 12 consecutive months. And the smaller, what we had called the ADU apartment or whatever, could be that part of the property that was only occasionally occupied by the owners. And we did want to allow for that flexibility also because of that idea that the use of the ADU in the main house, so to speak, could change over the lifetime of a family as, as the needs of the family changed. And so I think that's why that wording is in there, to allow for the fact that the main, the main house, so to speak, may become the rental unit. So Warren, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, indeed. I would echo, endorse your comments, Catherine. The second reason for this, the support of this bylaw in the first place, was really to allow families to age in place, and to have, move into the small apartment and rent out the big house that they didn't need anymore, and they'd be able to stay in their house, so to speak, on the property. And therefore, it absolutely is envisioned that the ADU, the small apartment, might be where the property owner lives, in which case, then it would be a requirement that the main house be rented out, 12-month lease, and everything else is the same. And with that as understanding, as I read it, Town Council is spot-on in terms of wording. Again, there's a motion on the floor that we accept that wording.
Okay, we're still discussing the motion on the floor, so that's okay. And I see both Arthur and Tom Gagin have their hand raised. Arthur, did you want to go ahead?
Well, now that I'm reading back at the beginning, I'm getting confused even further on this.
Okay.
Go back to the very first sentence, and it says, either the ADU or the principal dwelling shall be leased for a minimum of 12 months. Okay? With no subletting. Next sentence, it says, both units are prohibited from any use as rental units on a monthly, weekly, da-da-da-da-da. So essentially, this is putting some restrictions that I'm not sure that we actually had in place before.
Oh, I think we had all those restrictions in place, yeah.
And, and, and I think part of it is, I've got some red crossouts and red additions, and I got blue crossouts and blue additions, and now I'm, I'm at a point that I need to see what we had originally, and I had, I need to compare it to what we have now, and does this make the intent of what we want to do to deal with this? I'm a little bit concerned that this is going to create a lot of confusion and restrictions in an ADU. And that's the only reason why I'm bringing it up. If it's clear, then I will, and if that's exactly what we want, okay. But right now, I'm not sure that these changes are what our intent was. So I, I just think that we need to get some sort of a clarification on that. And maybe, Allie, if you have the original document with all these crossouts, that might help us understand, what was the original intent, and where will this change, either in red or blue, take us?
Yeah, thank you, Arthur. I agree. I mean, I've, I got a little confused with the red, the black, and the blue, and all the different levels of changes. But the way I'm reading it now, in my, in my humble opinion, I think it does say exactly what we want it to say. But I'm going to ask Allie if she can help us clarify, clarify for Arthur and the board, the change from the original. Yeah.
So I'm just trying to pull it up now. I just want to be clear, you want to see the, the original that was approved at town meeting in 2019, or the original with the red changes?
I think we have to step through all three, quite frankly.
So see the original from 2019.
Yeah.
First, yes.
Give me one second.
And Tom, did you want to comment before Allie clarifies, or?
I would, because, Tom Gagin, I would like to comment. I think to Arthur's point, perhaps we need to be clear on the definition of which unit is the ADU.
Yeah.
And that's where the, the confusion is. The language from the Town Council may be accurate, but do we have to put in, we have to put language in there so it won't be misread by others? If we designate in an ADU that A or B is the ADU unit, then all of the applicable restrictions that we have in place would make sense to that unit. So whether it's a small unit or the big unit, I, I think you're right, Catherine. We wanted to have flexibility, aging in place, for any reason. But I think it's confusing when we don't know which is the applicable ADU.
Right, yeah. I mean, essentially, that's exactly right. We wanted to apply the same rules and, and regulations to the principal dwelling if the property owner chose to make the smaller ADU unit their living dwelling. I mean, the, an example would be, as the property owner, as they got older, for example, they might want to make the smaller unit that was originally the ADU their, their dwelling place, and spend winters in Florida so they wouldn't be there year-round, but they want to rent out the larger house year-round in a 12-month lease.
Yeah, Tom, but I, I don't think that's the point that we're getting hung up on. It doesn't matter whether it's the smaller unit or the larger unit. One of the units on this property has to be designated the ADU. And then all of the applicable restrictions are, concerns we have in the bylaw have to apply to that unit. I don't care if it's left, right, up, down. So how can we clarify?
Totally, I disagree with that totally.
Okay. Is that, is that Bob?
It's Bob. The, the ADU is the smaller unit. Whether the person is occupying that one or the main unit is, is the issue. The ADU is the small unit. You start describing, because it's got a restriction, it can only be a certain percentage of the whole house. We've got all kinds of definitions of what that ADU is. The issue here is which one is being occupied by the owner, and which one is being occupied by the, the renter. And the issue that is really, needs to be said here is that only one of these units can be rented out. The other one has to be only occupied by the owner. Those are the issues that need to be clarified here, and not all this other stuff.
Okay. There's, Roger's hand is raised, Arthur's, Warren's, and Allie is also going to give us some clarification. But this is Catherine, I just want to reply to what Bob said. I think in that final sentence, that is what Town Council is attempting to accomplish. Neither of said units shall be used for boarding or rooming house purposes for any other boarding or lodging use, nor for other commercial use. So both units can't be used for any sort of rooming, boarding, or rooming use or commercial use. Both units cannot be rented on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis. But no occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease. But you're right, that final sentence, no occupancy of any.
Somebody to rent both units, this allows somebody to rent both units out at the same time on a, on a, on a lease.
That's, yes, I could, I would read that it could be interpreted that way, yes. That both units could be rented on an annual basis, on a 12-year lease. And please, board members, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that that is not the board's intention. The board's intention is that one unit must be rented for 12 consecutive months, annual lease, which is monitored and verified and enforced by the building commissioner. The other unit, be it the small unit or the big unit, is the property owner's, is occupied by the property owner, whether that's year-round or seasonal, is okay. So everyone's, Warren's waving his hand.
Well, I just, first off, I still agree, it's written exactly the way we would like it to be. It, you know, and it starts out either, either the ADU or the principal dwelling.
Shall.
Shall be leased for a minimum of 12 months. Well, to me, that says that not both of them, it's either one. And it can be either. And if you're out in place, you'll go live in the ADU. If you are, you know, alive and well and wealthy, you'll, you'll rent out the ADU. And that's the way this is, was intended to be written, and that's the way it reads. I don't think there's any ambiguity as to which building structure is the ADU. It's ADU and the principal dwelling, and that's the way it's reflected in all parts of the bylaw. And I think this reads exactly the way we had, I had it intended to read, and I think Town Council has just clarified it.
Okay, thank you, Warren. I'm reading it that way also. If you, you have to put the whole paragraph together and read it as a whole, and then I think it is accomplished. Roger, you had a comment?
No, the same, that's what I was saying. I think what, what we have done is, obviously, we know there's a principal, the principal dwelling, that's where you live, the other person owns, owns the home, and you're going to have an accessory dwelling, but you're only using, I guess, per se, one of, the principal, you may be living in what was the accessory, accessory dwelling unit, but you're renting the house, but you won't be renting, you won't be leasing the house for 12, to both units at the same time. And I think that's what we have here. See, I'm very colorblind, I can't, I can only tell the red from the other. It's me, everything else is the same. The blue and the black, I can't tell, so I'm, I have to say, because I can't, to me, it's all blended a long time ago.
Okay, oh, that's right, yes, that's right, I remember. Okay, it could be an advantage in this case, Roger.
I think so.
So Allie, you have the original from 2019. Arthur, do you still, should we do this comparison just for the sake of clarity?
Well, I, I think that, I'm, I'm hearing where this is going, but I just want to make sure that what is being proposed now is not different than what the original intent was. And I'm, I'm not quite sure, other than the first sentence, why all the other changes need to go into place, but I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I think it's worthwhile for Allie just to go through the original one without any edits at all. Let us all get our understanding of that, and see if the new changes, whether it's red or blue, concur with that, that's all.
Okay, that sounds good.
Can you see my screen?
Yes. Thanks, Allie. We can see your screen.
So this was the original wording. The principal dwelling, yep, the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit will be used as the principal residence of the owner, and the remaining dwelling will be leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no subletting to occur, and is prohibited from any use as rental units on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental services and websites. An ADU shall not be used for boarding and lodging and other commercial use. No occupancy of the ADU is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months and other conditions as stated.
Yeah, I think that last statement there is the differential on that, because it was referring to both units, any unit, was not, not to be leased for a minimum of less than 12 months. And that, that to me was the confusing thing. That's very different than the original statement, which says, no occupancy of the ADU is permitted other than. That was the declaratory thing. And why are we making a drastically different statement that applies to everything?
Well, because we have to, because it could apply to the, this is Catherine, sorry, because the change that we're making, and we want to make it clear, that either one or the other, either the principal dwelling or the ADU, has to be the rental unit, and that unit is rented for a 12-month lease, a lease of 12 consecutive months, and is subject to all of the conditions that are stated in this bylaw. The other unit, whether it is the smaller ADU The other unit, whether it is the smaller ADU or the principal dwelling, is excluded from certain things. You cannot rent it on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental websites. And you cannot use it for boarding or rooming house purposes or for any other boarding or lodging use or other commercial use. We're just not saying that it must be the principal residence of the owner.
Got it.
We're excluding that phrase.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Well, I agree that that is what the revisions do change. And if that is the direction that we wanted to include as part of this, then, okay. I was interpreting that we weren't necessarily doing anything with the main principal unit, but this essentially modification says that we are going to make a change to the effect of the original principal unit and how it's used, if it's an ADU.
Yeah. I think we're sort of making, this is Catherine. I understand that what we're proposing, and it got a little complicated because we're sort of doing two things at once. We're changing that the principal dwelling does not have to be lived in year round by the property owner. I mean, simply put, that it could be that their principal dwelling is in Florida and they're here in the summertime. But we are saying that they are allowed to build an ADU that would be subject to all the restrictions and conditions as stated herein. But secondarily, we are also in this paragraph making the allowance that it could be either the principal dwelling or the ADU that is the one falling under those conditions. Because we want to allow for changes like the one I just described. You know, say a couple has a house, they build an ADU, they get a little older, they decide they'll spend winters in Florida, summers in their little ADU, and they will rent the, what was called the principal dwelling. They will rent that out as the ADU, subject to all the conditions of the bylaw of the ADU. So we're trying to make allowances for two situations in this one paragraph, which may be why it gets confusing. Ally, I'm just going to ask for your comments on what I've just said, if you feel that's accurate.
Yeah, so I mean, we did try to incorporate both, and which is the reason why the first sentence, either the ADU or the principal dwelling, because that was the intent, is that you could live, you know, you could rent the ADU out. It could either be the principal dwelling or it could be the ADU, the new structure that you've built, or if it's internal, that section. We wanted to make sure you could do both. And that's what we were trying to accomplish here. I do agree that, you know, it might be more clear to not use the word "any", but go back to what we had originally proposed, which is the said rental unit. Because I think that that makes it very clear that it is the said rental unit, whether it be the principal dwelling or the ADU. But the said rental unit is permitted other than lease, no occupancy of the said rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months. So I think that that, personally, I think that makes it more clear to not accept that change from town council.
Okay.
There was to be added in the wording that the other, the other unit is not, cannot be rented at all. I mean...
Well, I think it's, that's what, this is Catherine.
Sort of says that, but yeah.
No, I don't think so, Bob. I think the other unit can be rented year round.
I think, this is Catherine, I think what Bob is saying that if we say no occupancy of the said rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum 12 consecutive months, et cetera, et cetera, that is it, I think, Bob, we have to go back to the first sentence where it says either the ADU or the principal dwelling shall be leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no subletting to occur. What if we said either but not both? What if we amended that first sentence to say either the ADU or the principal dwelling, but not both?
No, because...
Shall be leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no subletting to occur.
So the other one could be rented for five months if you said it's all right?
No, no, because the next following that says both units are prohibited from any use as rental units on a monthly, weekly, or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental services and websites. And then it says neither of said units shall be used for boarding or rooming house purposes for any other boarding and lodging use nor for other commercial use. So I think we're essentially, that essentially excludes that other non-12-month rental units from any other use other than occupancy by the owners. So I don't know how the board feels. Either the ADU or the principal dwelling, but not both, shall be leased for a minimum of 12 consecutive months with no subletting to occur.
Madam Chairman, this is Warren.
Yes, go ahead.
I think staff and town council have spent a lot of time to wordsmith this. As I read it more and more, it gets clearer and clearer to me. And I just not try and second-guess staff and town council that have drafted something which to me is quite clear. So I would, I would say we leave it alone.
Okay. So Ally suggested that we change that last sentence, though no occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, et cetera. Change that to no occupancy of the said rental unit is permitted other than by lease, which I think is fine. I actually think it's fine either way.
I think it's fine either way, but I think it's better the way it currently is. It sounds a little arcane in terms of language. There's only one rental unit here, no matter how you do this. So having it read, any rental unit is permitted other than blah, blah, blah. It's all ambiguous, but I think we're beating a dead horse here. I think we could go either way and it's clear.
Catherine, this is hard. I need a clarification here. The, the image that Ally has up on the changes with the red and the blue is different than what I have in my packet, so I'm not sure.
Yes, it is. It is different. So, all right, so no wonder we're a little...
I'm sorry, I think this is the wrong, hold on one second. I think I might have the wrong version.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you, Arthur.
I'm sorry, I had two versions from town council, so it's...
No, that's okay. That's okay. My one comment to Ally when we talked about this earlier today was that I got confused by the red and the blue and the black.
And Catherine, I just want to confirm, did we close the hearing and we're just in deliberations now, right?
Correct. We closed the hearing and we're in deliberations. We already took a formal vote to recommend this to annual town meeting. And we do need to take a vote on whether to accept town council's wording. Yes. And that's what we're in discussion. There is actually a motion on the floor that we accept town council's changes. But subsequent to that motion, there was no second, but there is discussion. So that's where we are.
Got it. Okay.
This is the right version, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's it.
All right, so we're still in discussion. Do we, Bob Wertschfter, how are you feeling with this? Do you still have a lot of reservations?
No, I'm fine if we take the "any" out and put the said rental unit.
All right. And... All right, so I would, I'm going to suggest that we amend the motion that was put forth by Arthur, I think he made the motion, to be that we accept specifically town council's suggested revisions for 4H, which are noted in blue, with the exception of the final sentence, that instead of saying no occupancy of any rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months and other conditions as stated herein, that we stay with no occupancy of the said rental unit is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months and other conditions as stated herein. And that otherwise, we accept the other suggestions made by town council in blue. So I'm going to suggest that we amend that motion. Arthur, are you willing to make that amended motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend that motion as you've just stated.
All right, and the order, may I have a second to that amended motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second it. I think it was my, and I amended it.
Okay. All right, so let's do a roll call vote. And so Arts Brew.
Arts Brew, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Let me take a deep breath. Yes, I approve.
Great. Bob Wertschfter?
I approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. And I'm just going to remind the public that we have closed this public hearing. We are in formal deliberations. We have been for quite some time. We've taken three formal votes. This is our third one. And as you know, once the public hearing is closed, I do see some members of the public with their hands raised, but I cannot recognize you because this public hearing was closed quite some time ago. And we did also complete the vote that we accepted town council and attorney general's opinion that this particular proposed bylaw amendment is subject to the supermajority. So we completed three votes. So with that being said, I think that we are done with this matter and we can move on to our next public hearing. All right, so now we will open a new public hearing. And this is for yet another proposed amendment to our protective zoning bylaw. And this is to amend the Town of Chatham Protective Zoning Bylaw, Section 4B Flood Plane District. The warrant article would revise the existing flood plane district bylaw to include mandatory additional requirements for administrative management of permits in the flood plain. In addition, mandatory revisions to the article would include ensuring adequate drainage as provided in subdivisions in the flood plain and certain rare flood zones, minimum flood damage in subdivisions, and requiring that recreational vehicles in the flood plain are either elevated and anchored in accordance with the zone's regulations for foundation and elevation requirements beyond the site for less than 180 consecutive days or be fully licensed and highway-ready. So to begin the public hearing, again, I'm going to ask Roger to read the public notice.
He just did.
You just did?
You just read, you just did.
Why don't you, why don't you read it again, Roger? I was reading, I was actually just reading from the agenda, but I think for the formal procedure, please just read the public hearing.
I still want to get, I still want to get the same page tonight because that was my job. But anyway, I'm kidding. Okay, I'll read. The warrant, the warrant article revised the existing flood plan district bylaw to include mandatory additional requirements for administrative management of permits in the flood plain. In addition, mandatory revisions to the article would include ensuring adequate drainage as provided in subdivisions in the flood plain in certain rare flood zones, minimizing flood damage in subdivisions, and requiring that recreational vehicles in the flood plain are either elevated and/or anchored in accordance with the zone's regulations for foundation and elevation requirements beyond the site for less than 180 consecutive days or be fully licensed and highway-ready.
Okay. Thank you, Roger. So again, we'll turn to Ally to summarize the purport of this zoning bylaw amendment.
Sure. So this is a mandatory bylaw change that has to happen in order for our flood insurance residents to be able to keep a discount. I think they mentioned 465 Chatham policy owners will lose their flood insurance policies, which could affect existing mortgages. So it's very important that we do pass this mandatory bylaw change or else we're out of a flood insurance program, which would not be good. So there are, as it was said in the legal notice and on the agenda, most of the new revisions here are administrative management permits of the flood plain. That's the majority of it. And then there are some other related revisions that were just right in the legal notice, but it's adequate drainage, minimize flood damage in subdivisions, talks about recreational vehicles, and that's really about it. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them. But Shannon Holst, and also our building commissioner, was at our last discussion of this as kind of like a pre-meeting. And I do believe that he answered a lot of the board's and public's questions.
Okay, great. So let's go through the board. I mean, I mentioned, this is Catherine, I mentioned to Ally that I noticed one small typo. And so that's usually not my job, but I did notice that. So we'll correct that. It's on, pages aren't numbered, but it's under, it's on the 1, 2, 3, it's on the fourth page, under point, under point V, Zone A. It just says, means an area of special flood hazard rather than food hazard without water. So that's just a small typo. Let's go, this, I think this bylaw has been very carefully put together with the help of Shannon Holst, who as Ally mentioned is the flood plain, is an expert in flood plain for the community and manages the community rating system specialist at Cape Cod Cooperative Extension. And I think you've all reviewed it earlier. But if there's any questions or issues, let's just go through. Arthur, do you have any questions or issues with the bylaw as put forth?
No, Arts Brew, no comments or questions.
Okay, great. Tom Gagin?
Same thing. I think this bylaw has been well-vetted and I have no comments or questions, please.
Great, thank you. Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, no comments or questions.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, no questions or comments.
Bob Wertschfter?
Nope, I have none either.
Okay. And this is Catherine. I have none. It's obviously been very expertly put together and well-vetted, and it is mandatory that we do this, so I have no questions or comments. Then next, in our public hearing procedure, I would ask for public statements in favor of this proposed bylaw amendment. I do see one hand raised. Gloria Freeman, if you wish to make a comment in favor of this proposed bylaw amendment.
Chairman Halpern, I'm sorry, my hand was up from the last item on your agenda. I was asking for a point of order, but I'll put my hand down for this discussion.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments in favor of this application? I don't have any correspondence to read, so I'll also ask for any public statements opposing this application. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. I don't see any. I don't see any. So then there is really no need for rebuttal. So any additional board comments before we vote to close the public hearing and go to formal deliberations? before we vote to close the public hearing and go to formal deliberations and formal vote? There being no additional board comments, may I have a motion to close this public hearing and enter formal deliberations and vote?
Warren.
Yes. So Warren, have you moved to close the public hearing?
Yes, I have.
May I have a second, please?
Roger Griffin will second that.
All right, we do need to do a roll call vote. Art Sprou.
Art Sprou, approve.
Uh, Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve, so this public hearing is closed. Uh, I will ask the board if there's any discussion before we go to formal vote. No discussion, no comments. So may I have a motion that we recommend this proposed bylaw amendment to the flood plain bylaw, that we recommend this proposed amendment to annual town meeting?
Roger Griffin will make the motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Warren Chain, I second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So the planning board recommends this proposed bylaw amendment to annual town meeting. We have one more public hearing on our agenda tonight, and that's regarding a proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding accessory buildings and structures. So rather than be repetitive, I'll just ask Roger to please read the public notice.
The warrant article would revise the existing accessory buildings and structures by law language to address storage sheds which measure, measured exactly 100 square feet. In addition, the article would exempt storage sheds of 100 square feet or less from the coverage, from, from coverage limitations in the bylaw.
Great, thank you. Um, all right, so do we need a presentation by Ally? I think we've seen this before us many times. It's basically a housekeeping matter to, to clean up a little conundrum in the bylaw as it is now. Um, I'll just ask, are there any questions from the board or comments? Discussion? I will ask if there are any public statements in favor of this application? There being none, we'll go to correspondence. I have received, we've received no correspondence on this matter. Uh, we'll ask for public statements in opposition of this application? There being none, there's no need for rebuttal, no further board comments. So may I have a motion to close this public hearing and enter formal deliberations and formal vote?
Art Sprou, make a motion to close.
Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. So we'll do a roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertsch after?
Bob Wertsch after, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve, so this public hearing is closed. We are in formal deliberations and formal vote. Since there's, I, I sense from the board there's really no need for deliberation or discussion. May I have a motion that we recommend this proposed amendment to our zoning bylaw to annual town meeting?
This is Warren Chain, I so move.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a second to that motion?
Art Sprou, I'll second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertsch after?
Bob Wertsch after, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve. So we. Yes, Mr. Gagin, I just want to say we've concluded that matter. We've concluded all four public hearings. Tom Gagin, please go ahead.
Yeah, we need a Bob Dubus motion.
Oh, a Bob Dubus motion. But first, I do need to ask if there's any other comments from the board. So I will ask for, the chairman has no comments. Our next meeting, as you know, is next Monday, March 14th. We do have another public hearing at that time. Uh, so may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Bob Wertsch after. The other Bob, may I have a second?
Art Sprou, second.
All right, so roll call vote. Art Sprou?
Art Sprou, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertsch after?
Bob Wertsch after, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
This is Catherine Halpern, I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. Uh, let's note the time, it's 7:42 in the evening. Thank you, everybody, for participating, and please enjoy the rest of the evening.
Good night, everyone.